Okay, it is now five P M and we're have a city council workshop. It is, oh, sorry, I guess I need to turn my mic on.
It is now five P M and it is time for our city workshop. And so if you have phones or saying please mute them as much as possible. Unless you're doing business, sorry. You can also watch this all on YouTube. Just go to the City of Brewster Lady and click the subscribe button. So we've already got Row Call, we've got Chief Dorsey in the back row. I have got Gene and Johnny from our water department. I have Pam Coens, our city secretary. I have Jamie Rodriguez in our water department. And up here, I have got Councilman Wiggins to my left. And to next to him is Councilman McGruer. And then we have our city administrator Kent Manton. Then to my right, I have Councilman Richard Prater and Councilman Richardson. So we will now, is there any type of city citizens presentation or anything that anybody wants to talk about during this workshop? That you have five, you have five minutes of uninterrupted to speak about something that might be on your mind or about the city that's not on the agenda tonight. So just gonna let y'all know. Nobody? Okay, thank you. Number three, if I could put my glasses on. Vehicle tire purchases. Council discussed, consider in the estimate a procedure for the tracking of maintenance and the purchasing of new tires for the city vehicles. Okay, y'all want to cuss and discuss on this one? Okay, go for it, Mr. Wiggins.
Let's see, um, this over signing checks, I kept noticing that was buying tires. And it seemed like the same vehicles. So I reached out to Esther and asked her to give me a list of all the vehicles and the tires that we've put on within the last year. And I, you know, I'll just say on the list, on that twenty fifteen Dodge. We put tires on it July twenty first, twenty three, four new tires. And then seven months later, February twenty sixth of twenty four, we put four more new tires. And then a year later, March the fifth of twenty five, we put four more new tires. So I don't think tires run out that often, you know. If they do, then something's wrong with the front end. If something's wrong with the front end, we don't just keep putting them on and wearing out tires and then put new tires on. And then allow the front end to be knowing this wore out. So I don't understand why these tires aren't lasting. And then I'll go on down the list while I'm on it. And then, and in the police department. Twenty two, twenty twenty two Dodge Durango. And from January the sixteenth, twenty four to June the twenty fourth of twenty four, we put four tires. And then six months later, we put two more tires. So, so January the twenty four to December twenty four, we bought six new tires. And the mileage was approximately a little bit over thirty six thousand miles is what he showed. So again, I don't understand why the tires are wearing out. Normally nowadays, I would think tires would last about sixty thousand miles. I mean, if we need them, we need them. But, and then I got to asking about, do we have a maintenance program on the vehicles? In other words, what I mean is like, we'll say unit one. Any, any work that we had on unit one, whether it's oil change or mechanic work or tires. You should have a list and no, we don't, is what I was told. And so I think we need to have a list and that way at any time, you can put it on the computer. Pull it up on the computer, pull up unit one, and you'll see everything that's been done to that unit and so on and so forth. And I also think that with that said, I think that should go to the chief, police chief to keep up with that for the police department. And probably Gene to keep up with it for the water and the maintenance department. So anyway, I'll cut it out.
I've got, I've got just a couple of things to add to that before I go to Mr. Prater. First of all, the first vehicle, we did have a, that vehicle did have a lot of front end damage on it. And it was messing up tires really bad. And they really short handed people, so they really did not want to put a vehicle in the shop at that time to try to get everything fixed. So that's one thing that caused us to buy extra tires, you know, before the sixty thousand miles or whatever. And they do a lot of mileage that on these vehicles and these tires. So I feel like they're very well accounted for. On the police department side, we need to make sure that our police department and our city workers have good tires on their vehicles. Because if they have to get there out on a run or they're pursuing somebody or something and they have a blowout because that tire, well, it's fifty. Oh, we could probably put twenty more thousand miles on that one tire. Well, go blow it out and might cause somebody to die, have a wreck. And as far as somebody maintaining and keeping a record of this, you're asking everybody to have an extra job. Right now, all the city workers inside the building are full. I mean, these people in here are working, they're working very hard. I gotta watch out for same thing. They're working very hard. And as far as our water department goes, of asking Gene to do it, there are already two men down. So they don't have enough men to start a new program, my opinion, to get, start doing this. You know, in the police department, he, he's short handed too. So I mean, if you'd like to do it, Mr. Wiggins, I'll vote for you to run this, you know. I mean, I would love to it, but I, as far as our workers here, the city workers and everything like that, I just feel like they have their, their vote is full. Okay, Mr. Prater, you have a question?
Yeah, I was, I was here when Mr. Wiggins brought it to the attention. And what I did is right from that, from that moment, I went and talked to Gene. And I think that's where we need to go with this is straight to the source. This is the truck that we just did, what, seven thousand dollars? This, we just got through doing it. Okay, so that would explain the, they was rotating the tires, moving the good to the front and the bad to the back. And trying to make them long, last a little bit longer. But that would explain the tire problem on there. As for the maintenance on it, I, I don't think it'd be very hard just to put on the computer, hey, we replaced two tires. I, I don't know how busy y'all are, but I mean, I, I think it'd be pretty easy. I mean, I don't need to see a report on it, but I would like to have it on a computer to where we could just hit a button and print it if we did want to see it. I don't think it'd take too much time, but I mean, we could probably even hire the low man on the totem pole to put that in the computer for us. I think, I think that would be good and if we ever did have to sell the vehicle, we could put a report with it also. But yeah, that pretty much explains the tire on, the tires on that truck. That is the truck that was, I mean, seven thousand dollars worth of front end damage. I, I could understand why it's even tired.
Mr. Richardson, you have a question?
Hi, sorry, I'm probably gonna speak for, for a minute on this. So I guess my first, first question with that twenty fifteen Dodge Ram. So it had the front end damage. Did we just defer repairs on that or like, was it a budgetary issue or what happened with that vehicle was kind of?
Gene, you want to answer that question?
The front end was rebuilt on it from, and Esther got itemized. See, I don't know if I got ball joints, up and lower control arms and some axles and different things on the front end. New shocks all the way around it and everything.
Now, I get all that, I guess like, so from like twenty three, twenty three, we just recently got that work done, right?
Yes.
Was it a budgetary issue with us or like, do we just not have the money?
Well, no, it's.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to pick at anybody, I'm just trying to.
No, it's hard to pull a truck out of service when we don't have a spare or a backup. You know, when we got people in them and that truck will pull the back trailer, it'll pull the goose neck. You know, that's another thing too, when you pulling those heavy equipments with that truck, it's gonna wear the tires out even sooner.
Is that the truck primarily used to pull the trailers? Does that truck do most of the trailer pulling?
Well, that truck will pull the goose neck if the dooley is down or whatever. But it'll pull just, just like any other vehicle that we got.
Okay.
It's just hard to pull them out of service if we, we don't have extra spares.
Nah, it makes sense. I'm just asking out my ignorance is all, I'm not trying to pick at nobody or nobody.
Another thing too, we buy these tires of Youngbloods and no warranty on them, no road hazard or anything. So unit six, the old police truck, we put tires on it because it had, when Richard left, it had two good years, one in the front, one in the back, opposite sides. And two of the Nexus, one in the back, one in the front, opposite sides. None of them matched, you know, if we're gonna be driving this truck, they need to match and be good tires on there. So this was before anybody mentioned anything about tires. So, hey, I wanted to get a flat fixed, you know, they're look dry rodded, let's put four tires on there, be done with it. Well, the other day reading meters, I get flat. If it was in the sidewall, you gonna buy a new tire. There's no way around it. They charged me thirty dollars to fix the flat because we don't have a road hazard warranty on them.
So do you think if we looked around and possibly found some of the, something that did offers a warranty, that would be probably?
I mean, it'd probably be a better deal, I mean, we wouldn't have spent thirty dollars to fix flat.
I got you.
Because, I mean, it's like P D, we don't want to put a plug in a tire.
Yeah, I know, I get that.
Be somewhere and the plug blow out.
Yeah.
What else was it? I think that's all I got, sorry.
Like I said, I'm not running the department or anything and I just got a couple more things, sorry.
No, you go back to this, well, you got the floor right now.
I do agree with, I do agree with Mr. Wiggins and Mr. Prater on this. I don't, we don't have to do this like massive data entry operation. This date, this mileage, this unit changes all, this date, this mileage, change tires. That way we at least have a record. And also like if you have something like a police pursuit where some, there's an accident or something and your officer's like, well, the brakes came out. Well, have we been complaining that the brake, like some sort of, like I know, I was at the sheriff's office, we did a vehicle inspection once a month. And that was like, hey, are there any mechanical issues? That was the documentation, no, we just fixed these brakes or no, this wasn't even mentioned as an issue. Just to kind of get a, get accurate idea if something was to happen down the road. I guess I do kind of, looking through the police side of this, I got a question about the twenty twenty two Dodge Durango. It's just looking through this, there's, we've had eleven tires put on the Durango since January of twenty twenty four. And also the Durango for a twenty twenty two Durango, it's eighty three thousand miles versus the twenty twenty two Explorer's forty nine thousand. And then twenty nineteen Tahoe's eighty four thousand. It just seems like that's, kind of curious why the Durango is getting so many more miles and so many more tires than the rest of the police fleet, just something to look into.
Do you have an answer to that, Chief?
Shine some light on that, I guess.
Yes, sir. As far as the mileage goes on that car.
Chief, can you divert them out?
Sorry. Well, face them the other direction, that way we don't get the feedback the way they were set up.
One facing my door and one facing that, there you go.
On the, on the mileage aspect of it, there was a period of time that we were short cars and that vehicle was, you know, being drained pretty much twenty four seven. There for several months and so that was a big factor on why the mileage went up considerably on it. As far as tires go on that vehicle. I know we've, we've put a full set of tires on it, but then there has been a few instances where we've gotten nails in the sidewall or. Our tires that, you know, punctures that couldn't be fixed. And we had to replace the tires versus getting them repaired because they weren't repairable. So we had to purchase a new tire.
I got you, it's just looking through this list, like we got total tire, total tire counts, one, five, five, four, one, four, and then eleven. So I was just kind of asking about that kind of anomalous kind of numbers.
Yes, sir.
That was it.
Okay, Mr. McGruer?
Yeah, I think if, if my memory serves me correctly, I think. I'll have to go and look back through the invoices, but.
And I don't expect you to know that.
It's probably been two sets of tire, two full sets of tires and then some just miscellaneous. You know, tires that had to be replaced due to, you know, punctures that couldn't be fixed. So.
Thank you, Chief.
But I will say this, on any tires that we do have to purchase, as far as a sidewall puncture or something of that nature, I do notate on the invoice. When I turn it in that the tire had to be purchased due to a sidewall puncture or due to a blowout or something like that. I will notate it on the invoice when I turn it in.
In your opinion, I'm sorry, one last, one last thing while I'm speaking. In your opinion, do you think maybe the city looking at getting a, a tire, tire dealer with some warranty issues, do you think that might be a good value? At least something that worth looking into?
I mean, it does seem to happen more.
I know how dirty the interstate is.
I mean, our luck's not very good when it comes to tires, to be honest. And so I, it would definitely be, be a benefit because it's something that does happen often. Well, it's not like, you know, every week or every month, but you know, it does frequently happen. But we do get either young, we either use Youngbloods or Goodyear and we get, you know, the government pricing on the tires. So we get a, a good deal on the tires. But if we got a warranty or something like that, that would. A good deal on the tires, uh, but if we got a warranty or something like that, that would. That would benefit then a little bit.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. McGurk, you have a question, then we'll go back to Mr. Wiggins.
Yeah, just.
Let's try and get that out of his speaker.
So anyway, okay, two things, one, it seems like we were able to pull together a report. If it was necessary to pull a report on the vehicles, it was if rather than continually doing entries. There's there's a way to pull up a report. The other thing is, is if everything we do, everything we do, we get an invoice for it. Nobody goes down there and says, here, put four tires on there and then I'll leave with four new tires, you're gonna get an invoice. Rather than do a data entry kind of uh, procedure. Let's, all you have to do is put that vehicle number on on a folder.
No big paper.
Uh, on a folder and then you put the invoice or a copy of the invoice in the folder. Now, if I wanna know what happened to that vehicle, not only do I have an entry. Not an entry, but you have something, I can pull up the invoice and see exactly what they did. That's not really, we're not talking about throwing a major.
Spreadsheet.
Major spreadsheet or a major burden or additional burden on the staff. As long as you've got a file for every time you do an invoice, throw it in there.
Keep it in the vehicle.
And I wanna know about the vehicle, hey, you had you had all these tires on this vehicle, can I see what's in there? And then, uh, the officers actually and, uh. The people with public works went when they do uh, they use the vehicle, you can keep a time log and you. You know, I I took it out at this mileage, I brought it back at this mileage. And then at the end of the week or or whatever, you turn that in, that goes in that folder as well. Now, you got a folder record written and we didn't put any burden on staff here at City Hall. And the burden's on the guy who's driving that vehicle. But yeah, that would be my recommendation.
All right, Mr. Wiggins?
Okay. I don't I don't believe it's gonna take, it's not like every day we we have something done to a vehicle. And every day, they're gonna have, somebody's gonna have to go in there and make a list out. I believe it's more beneficial rather than putting it in a file folder, that's kind of old school. But uh, putting it in a file folder and saying, unit one, this is all the receipts for it, that that's good to do that. But additionally, have have it on a spreadsheet, I'll say, it's not that hard to set up a spreadsheet. And okay, when you get new tires, when you get new tires, you don't buy them very often. Just go in there, put it in there, don't take very long at all, and get the oil changed, put that in there. Or you have uh, maintenance done on it, it's not like we have something done every week. So I don't think this is just gonna burden people to death because we're asking them to do this, no. I think it's a good, it's a good organizational, is what I believe. And as far as a vehicle, that front end, yes, that's right, but you know what bothers me? Is that in a year and seven months, we put twelve tires on that. And so it's like, we knew that was down, we knew it was messed up, but we kept wearing the tires out and putting new tires on it. Until we could get it to fixed. Yeah, I, you know, that's, I don't know, I got an issue with that, that's a year and seven months, we went twelve tires. So a- a- anyway. And and I'm I'm not asking, you know, and I'm not asking nobody to to drive to drive on bad tires, I never said that. What what I said is I don't, I don't believe that anybody, if we need them, we need them, is what I said. I never said want nobody uh, drive on bad tires, Miss Owens.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Mayor Owens, thank you. Okay, Mr. Wiggins, thank Councilman Wiggins. Okay, Mr. Prater?
I do uh, do have a question. Did this all start, remember, cause we got that, we got that duly to pull the all the equipment. And at the at that time, your truck was pulling everything. That's that's when all this started, wasn't it? Back, cause that truck's a twenty two. Yeah, because it.
And then we had some work done on it. And uh, the place that we had the work done on it said their front end needed some work on it. But we had spent so much on it a year or so prior that, you know, try to. Instead of trying to hit everything at one time and uh, getting a vehicle fixed, that's. Spending thirty dollar loan.
Right.
Spread it out.
Well, right here, it's a, it says it's a that that duly is a twenty two. So we.
No, I'm talking about the twenty fifteen.
So we got it in twenty three because it took them, it took us a while to get it here.
No, I'm talking about the twenty fifteen.
I know, but.
Oh.
The twenty, the twenty two Dodge uh, duly.
Yeah, I didn't say.
We didn't have that, all we had was Jean's truck and that was what was pulling everything. So I could understand why the why it's all messed up and why we had to keep it.
And I'm sure if y'all stop and think and look back, I've been told by council members. Man, you need to get some new tires on that truck because they're slick. Do I not drive that truck until them tires are slick?
Yeah, yeah.
But I I I remember when all that happened and we was having to use, that's the whole reason we got that that tradesman.
Right, because we had no place transmission on that truck.
Yeah, yeah, it was, we was wearing that truck out every day. So I I I was thinking back on that and that's that's when it all started, it's in twenty three, that's when we started putting tires on.
So and and the mileage is on the invoices, you know, ain't nobody, you know, we're getting them disposed of, there's a disposal fee. There's nobody taking these tires and reselling them, they're tin ply tires.
Yeah.
And they're no good once they come off of that truck, I can tell you that right now.
Yeah.
Mr. Rut- Richardson, you have a question?
It's just more kind of responding to Mr. McGurk's idea of the invoices and the folders and all that. The issue with that is you have a bunch of papers and a bunch of different folders, so. This list took me about thirty seconds to count up the tires for unit eleven. Versus the if we do a paper folders, paper invoice, I'm gonna have to pull invoice for unit one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Pull out all the things, look through all the papers, that's gonna be time consuming if we actually wanna do any sort of data comparison. I mean, I get Mr. McGurk's concern for the staff time, I share his concern for the staff time. But a couple minutes a day to create a word or Excel database is, like I said. We don't have to do like doc write the next American novel on this on this databases. This unit, this date, this maintenance, this mileage, the end, and if you wanna pull a more detailed invoice. Then you go to the actual invoice, pull it up and look through the details, but we have all that data at our finger fingertips easily accessible, is kind of my suggestion.
Thank you, Councilman Richardson. Okay, Councilmember McGurk? Okay, uh, okay, I wanted to say, no, Mr. Wiggins, you didn't, Councilman Wiggins, you did not say that we wanted them to drive on bad tires. I was just taking it as you was wondering why, you know, we was putting so many tires on those vehicles like. They were maybe selling them or taking them or something was that was doing something wrong with those tires. And that I took it at that because we have never questioned any of our workers about their vehicles and their tires. The wear and tear on their vehicles, because they've always maintained their vehicles to do the best of their abilities. And they have always come up and told everybody to the best of their ability what was going on. And I just felt like that was just a, your comment was kind of a thing towards the workers and that's how I took it. It may not have been that way, sir, but that's just the way I took it.
No, ma'am, it was not that way.
All right, yes, sir.
You know, you you know, when I speak, I know what I mean when I say something.
But sometimes you don't exactly clear it out, so when we think it, we're hitting another thing.
I don't know what you're thinking, ma'am, but it if it, I mean, like you just said, and I told you, no, that is not what I meant at all. Okay, so.
Yeah, and that's why there was so many questions with people with their hands raised, because they didn't quite understand everything you said in that.
Well, they could ask me.
Well, that's.
All they gotta do is say, well, I don't understand what you said.
Yes, Mr. Wiggins, I'm sorry, you're you're correct, okay.
Uh, one other thing is is that, uh. You know, on on these on these tires, like I said, if we need them, we need them, but uh. You know, and it's good for us to bring this out, cause did did we know? Did you know that if that we used all these tires and this is the reason why? No, no, that's our job is when we see something like I saw that we's, I signing checks and unit four, whatever it was. Uh, need tires and it wasn't a few months later, it's like unit four again need tire, I thought, golly, what's going on here? And so I'm, to me, I'm doing my job, that's my job is is to question things and ask.
Yes, sir.
And and uh, that's why I wanted you to on here where we could, cause maybe you didn't know. I didn't know and I didn't know why, but now we all do. And and we try to correct that and you know, if there's anything we can do to help going forward, then we should do that.
I appreciate that, I just felt like this here should have been more a more of a conversation that should have been taken care of in-house.
Then then ma'am, the thing with that is everybody don't hear what everybody's saying. And here, we're all on the same page, we have all the information, documentation, and we all have. Uh, we hear what Jean has to say, hear what the chief has to say, we can ask questions, and we're all on the same page.
Okay, um, so I'm in disagreeance with that to an extent. Because I found out through Kent that I was being investigated for tires. But yet Dorsey, Mr. Wiggins goes straight to Dorsey and asked him about his tires, he's never asked me personally about them. He's gone elsewhere, so if it's me, then come to me. Well, you know, if Dorsey is, if he can go to Dorsey, come to me with it, I'm not hiding nothing.
Thank you, sir.
And Jean, we're certainly not accusing you of anything like that, but there there is a difference of in the hierarchy between yourself and Chief Dorsey, okay?
But it's never been an issue before.
Good to go.
Other things like that, it's never been an issue before, so now this is. But then gonna have the police chief investigate the tires? Come on, that is a shot at me.
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, Jean.
Never say.
I have a question.
Okay, yes, Mr. Richardson?
So Kent, you mentioned that Jean and Dorsey are different in the hierarchy, are are they not both considered department heads or how does that work?
So they are both department heads, yes, we have a a mayor council form of government and you've hired me as a city administrator. However, the chief of police reports directly to uh, the mayor, like myself. And so his staff, you know, PD staff is under the under the police chief, whereas the public works director, city secretary. Et cetera, et cetera is under the city administrator according to our org chart.
Got you. I would say just like that, I I do see what Jean's saying, I mean, you're going to one department head directly and not the other one directly, that does. I can see how the message that could give off.
Yes, sir, all right, thank you, sir, all right. Here we go, all right, let's move right along, let's go to something else now. Uh, number four, uh, changes to the official slogan motto. Council discuss and consider possibly amends to the existing city slogan motto of rising into the future. Okay? That was a, um, I think, wasn't that, that's what you can on that?
Yes, ma'am, yes, just catching up real quick. Yes, so this was a discussion item that came up in our Economic Development Corporation meeting back in February to, you know, why did we have this this motto? You know, what was the history behind it and was anybody interested in changing it? And so at that at that moment, I wasn't directly asked, but I was kind of pushed to to put out this um, survey to the public, which I think was a really good idea. Let's get the public involved with it, you know, this is something that we we all share, right, our motto, our slogan, our ethos. So we sent out a Savvy Citizen Blast on April the tenth, we got twenty nine suggestions back, five of those, uh, including five of those to keep our current motto. So at the uh, May thirteenth BEEDC meeting, directors discussed these results uh, of the survey. They ultimately decided not to make a recommendation to council for any specific suggestion. They thought this was might have been a little bit outside of their scope, was my understanding. However, they did ask council to go ahead and provide them some direction on this matter, you know, whether or not to keep the same one or to potentially change it. That way they have some um, direction moving forward on their um, promotional materials that they're in the works of creating. So here you go, these are all the responses that we got back. A lot of good suggestions, I provided those to council in the packets. Well, all these ideas have one vote, with the exception of Small Town Big Heart, which had two. And then keeping the current one, Rising Into The Future, had five. So these were our top three results, Rising Into The Future, Small Town Big Heart, and then I. I decided to go ahead and throw a number three up there, it only received one official vote, but I've heard some other folks talking about it, Heart of Texas Crossroads. So President Weaver's recommendation here is to select a motto, again, so that they can produce those promotional materials.
Y'all have any discussion on this, what y'all what y'all think about that? Right now, we have this and it just says Rising Into The Future, that's the logo, but you know, I mean, it's it's just a name. So whatever y'all think, yes, sir.
Just my two cents, I mean, I don't feel really strongly about this one way or another, um, but I'm good with keeping it the same.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
Any of y'all want something different, I'm happy to go along with whichever direction y'all go.
That's what I thought, myself, okay? Mr. Prater, do you have a suggestion of any kind, what you like and don't like, or you okay with it or? Go with the flow.
I go with the majority, and majority says.
Go with the flow, yeah, the majority is five, yeah. Mr. Mr. McGurk?
Well, I I like, we already have, there we go. Magic fingers. We already have the motto, it's up on the wall, I don't I don't have a problem with the the motto. And to me, if it's not broke, I'm not gonna fix it. And so, um, the other the other suggestions up there and some of the ones that were in there.
I mean, they all sound good.
They sound great, but again, I go back to if it's not broken.
Don't fix it.
Don't fix it.
Yes, sir, okay, Mr. Wiggins, you have a suggestion?
Well, there's all good suggestions and like you said, that, you know, we already have it here. But if you wanted to, you could combine number one and number two and you could say, rising into the future in a small town with a big heart. You know, I don't know if that's too long, rising into the future in a small town with a big heart.
To me, it's a bit wordy, but that's just my experience.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with it like it is, yeah, and then we had five votes for it.
How about that, I think we're all in agreement, just keep it unless.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
And and they're happy with either way we go on this, they just leave it a kind of a.
Yeah.
A lead way, I guess you could say, from the council?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say just leave it alone, ma'am.
I'm sorry, oh, yes, ma'am, you can get up here and talk.
I didn't probably talk loud enough where everybody can hear me.
I'm sorry, I did not see your hand, all right.
That's very hard, I apologize.
What this reminds me of is Fort Cabasus or Fort Hood.
Fort Hood, Fort Hood.
Guess what it is, it's Fort Hood, let's keep it.
And it's going back, it's going back to Fort Hood. I know it's going back, that's all the changes today.
Yes, it did, all right. Anybody else have any suggestions or anything, any citizens? Everybody's happy with everything? Jeez, that's good, I like that, all right. Okay, number five. We're gonna adjourn this uh, city council workshop and at six o'clock, we will uh, re uh, come back in for our regular council meeting.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is June the 26th of 2025 at 6:00 PM. This is our regular city council meeting. Meetings are available to watch on our YouTube channel. Search for the City of Bruceville Eddy and click to the subscribe button. Please mute your phones and computers to avoid any interference during this meeting. Thank y'all again for being here. It's always great to see everyone. We have one council member out and that's Joyce McLaughlin. And I don't understand why she would want to go celebrate her anniversary instead of come to a council meeting. I hadn't figured that out yet, but, but anyway, she's, she's would love to be here with everybody, but this was a little bit more important. So I told her that was perfectly fine. But anyway, okay, if y'all would please stand for our prayer. Lord God, we come to you tonight to say thank you for all of the citizens of Bruceville Eddy. And to thank you for all of our workers and our first responders, our military of this, and getting Fort Hood back. That's one thing. I love that name. It's always been Fort Hood to me. So I thank you for that, Lord God. Lord, we just say that we just want you to protect everybody while they're out there defending for our safety and for the city workers that are out there every day working as hard as they can in this kind of heat. Just protect them, Lord God, that they have plenty of fluids and make sure they take care of themselves. Thank you for the city workers inside the building because every day these ladies and gentlemen are up here just doing everything they can to help the city of Bruceville Eddy. Because that's why we come to work here. That's why we've been elected. That's what we do is help the citizens. So I just want to say thank you, Lord God, and please guide us tonight that we will make the right decisions on our agenda that we've got on the books. And I just want to say thank you for everyone here and for the families out there, Lord God, that has lost a loved one in our city here lately. It seems like we've been losing some. So I just, again, I just want to say thank you. And I ask for all these things in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, and indivisible. You may have a seat, please. Okay, we're gonna do a roll call here. And here on my left, I have a councilman at the very end. I have Councilman Wiggins. I have Councilman McGurrer. And I have our city administrator Kent Matten. And to my right, I have Councilman Prater and Councilman Richardson. And in the back, I have our chief of police, Michael Dorsey. I have our city worker, Jean and Johnny, for our water, uh, city workers. And I have Pam Combs, our city secretary, and have Jamie Rodriguez. She's in our water department. And I have our, I never can think of his name, Armin. And, and we have our engineer, uh, people back there is Armin. And so I just want to thank everybody here. Did I get everyone or did I miss somebody? Oh, Ms. Christina, yes, thank you. Hi, sorry about that. So I guess that's, I've mentioned everyone, I hope. All right, um, memorial.
So this next item of business here is a mayoral proclamation. This is for URJ Green Family Camp's 50th anniversary. So this is proclaiming and celebrating their 50th anniversary and longstanding legacy to our community. Whereas URJ Green Family Camp has served the Jewish community throughout the United States by offering an immersive and exhilarating summer camp experience to children from Texas, Oklahoma, and beyond. And whereas URJ Green Family Camp has provided employment opportunities for the citizens of our community. And whereas URJ Green Family Camp has served as a direct public service through the years by offering its facilities to aid in times of emergency and to local nonprofits for various fundraising events. And whereas URJ Green Family Camp is now celebrating its 50th year of service in our community. And lastly, whereas we want to express our sincere appreciation to URJ Green Family Camp for choosing our community over this past half century and to all the board members, staff, and camp alumni who have invested their time, their treasure into the mission and vision of this tenured institution. Now therefore, I, well, Linda Owens. Do hereby recognize and honor the decades-long commitment this organization has displayed to our country and region. I do hereby proclaim July 12th, 2025, as URJ Green Family Camp Day in the city of Bruceville Eddy. And I will just note that the mayor and myself, we are going to be delivering this to them at their, uh, at their 50th anniversary celebration in the month of July. So we'll be out there on behalf of the city to wish them well.
Yes. All right, now, community announcements, does we have any community announcements out there? Mrs. McGur.
Hello.
Hello.
So just a reminder, I know that it was on Savvy Citizen and it's on the slide for our First Friday Bingo. We're actually going to cancel it this month for the holiday. So the next First Friday Bingo will be August 1st. And then we are also not doing a vendor fair. The next vendor fair will probably not be until sometime in the winter, probably November or December.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else have any announcements out, outside, out there? Okay, go ahead and do the, I have one. I would like to, for all the citizens of Bruceville Eddy, if you are in need of a fan, it's just a little, not a little, it's a window fan, a box fan. The city up here, we have some fans up here. Right now, we have 20. And if those go, go away, there will be some more brought. So right now, if anybody out there, or if y'all know of anybody that needs a fan, you know, please let the ladies at front know and they'll make sure that they get, that they, y'all, they'll give y'all one to take to these people because there's a lot of people out there. And this summer's not going to get cool. It's going to be very hot and there's a lot of people out there that don't have AC. So a fan sometimes just having a little breeze might help. So we do have that, I just want to make that announcement, okay?
I'll piggyback off that real quick. For anybody who saw that letter to the citizens that mayor put out a little bit earlier this month, we do still have plenty of bottled water available just to show, you know, our, our apologies for all the, the recent water main breaks as a result of this sewer project. So just come see us at City Hall. We've got those for every, every citizen of Bruceville Eddy or a customer of our water system. Two cases while supplies last.
Yeah, the city did buy the water for the, the citizens and the fans were donated. So they, they were donated, so, okay? And now.
Yeah, just a couple other minor items. I hope everybody's enjoying their summer because we don't have a whole lot of announcements. We've just been plugging and carrying forward with your business, the business of the people. But here on July 4th, we will be closed in observance of Independence Day. And then on the, on the 12th of July, weather depending, we will be hosting another roll-off collection date. Just as a reminder, if you can't make that collection date, if you're a citizen of Bruceville Eddy, you have waste connections, trash service, you can request a bulk pickup. You can just set that by your curb if you've got a larger item. And we will actually send a separate truck out there on Wednesday to collect that for you.
All right, anybody else? All right, moving right along. Okay, number three, citizens' presentation. The city council welcomes public comments at this point on items not specifically listed on the agenda. Speakers must sign up before the meeting begins. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. The council cannot respond to these matters not listed on the agenda until a future meeting. And I have one sign up here and it's Mr. Frank Warren. If you want to come up forward, please, sir.
My name's Frank Warren. I reside at 414th County Road, 437, Eddy, Texas. And I'm a member of Eddy Masonic Lodge, number 797. And I wanted to tell you about a Community Builders Award is what we're going to present tonight. The Community Builders Award was designed by the Grand Lodge of Texas to enable local Masonic lodges to recognize outstanding non-Masons who have distinguished themselves through their service to community, government, church, or synagogue, or humanity. It's saying, it seeks out those men or women who, year in and year out, quietly and without fanfare, show devotion to their community and its people without the expectation of recognition. It is my pleasure to present this award this year to Kent Matten. For, for his service, yeah. I guess y'all don't want to hear me read the rest of that. I just want to, that's okay. Have we got cameras? Yes, good.
This award is presented once a year if we have a candidate. So I would like to present this, uh, in its brief, Community Builders Award for the Grand Lodge of Texas, Kent Matten.
Can I say just a couple things?
Okay, what did you say? I need to make it.
We gotta, we get ahead of the, ahead of the game here in just a minute. I might add that his recognition for this award is a tribute to the staff and employees of this city. Without a backup, he, he wouldn't win a ward like this. So he has a great staff and we want to commend them too.
Come on up here, youngins. Want to go up there too?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a, a couple moments and, and just say, you know, I'm very humbled by this award. I was not expecting it at all. Each and every day, I just come out here and try to do my best and put my faith first and then, you know, put this city second. My wife and, and daughter can certainly attest to that, just giving it all. But I would be remiss if I did not say, and Frank already mentioned this, that, that really the work is a team effort. And all of these staff members have been a part of this. We are literally building the future right now. I mean, you can see it all throughout Bruceville Eddy. Uh, but this, the projects that we are doing have been, projects that have been in the works for many years. Some of that stuff is starting to rise to the surface, but it's, it's been here a long time. So if, if I could just ask staff to come up here real quick, I would love to get a photo with y'all just for, you know, record sake and.
Come on, guys.
And with this award, because I, I really do believe that it's, it's a team effort. So any staff in the room, Christina, Messer Ford has been a part of all this. Armin, you're not getting out of this as well. Come up here for a quick photo.
Come on, yes you are. No, you're part of it. Council members, council members, he wants council members too. Okay, council members next, okay. Get these first and then council.
Really want me up?
I'm getting a staff. Y'all, y'all get on in there, squeeze in there. I know, he hates his picture taken, but that's tough. Good people. All right, one more, one more, one more.
No, there's too many of us.
All right, thank y'all. All right, now he'd like the council members up there, please.
Yes, and I was going to save this, you know, for last. Obviously, my, my family has been a big supporter, but council, y'all have also been a, a big supporter of everything we do. I know we don't always agree on every issue. You, you can't possibly do that, but this council has been mostly united in, in planning for your infrastructure, preparing for that. We have a lot of discussions that go on behind the scenes that get us to one of these council meetings that you get to see a couple votes. And so I'm just incredibly thankful for all the support and the time that they put in. So I'd, I'd appreciate just a quick photo with y'all as well, if you don't mind.
Y'all get over there by the flags. Not your back, we don't want your good side, we want the other side. All right. Our next stop is Hollywood. All right, okay, number four, I-35 Water Main Crossing Award Contract. Awarding contract, council to discuss, consider, and apologize, take action on resolution R-6-26-2025-1, selecting bids and awarding a contract for the IH-35 Water Main Crossing to the Foodie Travel Center Development. Kent?
Yes, ma'am, and Armin, I hope I don't steal all your thunder on this one, but this was a project that has been bid out. Yeah, you can come on up. So this was bid out for that bore underneath I-35 to serve the Foodies Development. You can see it right there on the map. It's around the old, the old, south old telephone or temple road there. Is that temple or telephone?
South Old Temple Road.
Old, old temple, okay. So a couple important notes on this one. So this project is exclusively, exclusively for the Foodies Travel Center. It's located fully within the city of Lorena. However, it's within our certificate of convenience and necessity, so we do have to provide water there. The base bid for this called for a six-inch water main to service the facility. Council does have the option to go ahead and upgrade that. Council does have the option to go ahead and upgrade that to a ten-inch for only twenty-one thousand dollars, which is a, a really good value, in my opinion. Foodies has elected to move forward with this bid. However, they have hit a delay in finalizing the permits with the city of Lorena. So that has also delayed some of their financing. So the contractor, Southern Contractors Group on this one, they're the lowest bidder. Should you choose to accept their bid, they have agreed to delay the materials purchase on this. So MRB Group would immediately issue a change order after the award is made. And then with a, with an estimated construction completion or construction commencement date of September twenty twenty-five. So just so everybody's on the same page, this project is only going to cost water customers, taxpayers of Bruceville Eddie the amount of any additional line size increase should council choose to pursue that. Everything else is being paid for by the developer. This is what they need to provide service to their facility. So you can see down there, a notice to proceed will not be issued until we receive the full project amount of two hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. So you can see here, we've got the lowest bidder, Southern Contractors. There's your cost to upgrade that for a total project cost of two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, eight hundred and sixty. Right now, cash on hand, we've got, we've got one point six million dollars in the water fund. This project, in this budget year, we had about one million dollars set aside for projects. This year, we've spent one hundred thousand. We've got four hundred and eight thousand encumbered right now towards that Old Bethany project. So right now you have five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars remaining. My recommendation on this one is to proceed with that ten-inch upgrade.
Would you like to?
And that sums it up very well. Thank you, Kent. But no, yeah, I agree with Kent. Upsizing to the ten-inch now is the much cheaper option. If you don't do that, it would just basically cost this or more in the future. So.
Anybody have a question? Mr. Richardson?
I'd like to clarify, just if you aren't familiar with this, we have worked with Southern Contractors on previous projects and they've done good work for us, right?
Correct. Yes, they did the water main improvements on FM twelve thirty-nine.
In case somebody watching or hearing wasn't caught up, I just want to point that out.
Exactly right. And they're actually about to start the Old Bethany Water Main Improvement within the next few weeks. So.
Anybody else say anymore? Mr. Wiggins?
I'll just, I'll just make a, make a motion to approve resolution R six dash twenty-six dash twenty, twenty-five dash one for the bid for Southern, to Southern Contractors in amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which will be the upgrade of the ten-inch line also.
I'll say.
We gotta, before we second it, we gotta sit this in.
Yeah, no, no, we have to get a second and then I'll talk to the citizen. Okay, so Mr. Mr. McGurk, second that. Yes, sir, you have a question?
I'm Rick Edmiston. My question is, is what size line is the ten-inch line going into on, on the opposite side of the interstate?
So this will be a stubbed-out ten-inch line. There will be a six-inch line heading north that will tie into the Foodies, but a ten-inch will be sub, stubbed out towards the south for future growth. So it's actually not connecting to anything and it's just providing water to the new Foodies, but preparing for future growth in that area.
So on the southbound side, what side of the line is that?
There's an existing two-inch further south. And if there's a development that comes in, they're, that they'll end up being required to tie into the ten-inch because that two-inch is, will not be sufficient for future growth.
Armin, just a bit of clarification. Mr. Edmiston, you were asking going southbound on I thirty-five. I think that's a six-inch on the west side of the highway. Is that what you were?
Yeah, the west side of the highway is currently a six-inch, correct. And it's fed from two directions. Yep.
All right, we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. Number five, okay, open public hearing. Zoning change from single-family dwelling District One to planning development District nine oh one Eagle Drive, Eddie, Texas, seven six five two four. Counselors to hear public comments pertaining to and owner, agent, initial zoning change on property located at nine oh one Eagle Drive, Eddie, Texas, seven six five two four, containing a total of one hundred and twenty-two point forty-six acres and future described as being local within the city limits of Bruceville Eddie and in between Eagle Drive and Old Moody Road from its current destination of single-family dwelling District One to the planning development district. Public hearing is open to any interested person with opinions, objections, and or comments related to this matter. Comments related to this matter may only be expressed via email, email, or by appearing in person. Another person or attorney may also represent. It is now six twenty-three. Six twenty-three and this, it, the public hearing is now open. All right, Adrian, go ahead.
Good evening. Most of you know who I am already, but for record, my name is Adrienne Donatucci. I'm with WBW Development. I'm here tonight to talk about the planned development district known as Eagle Prairie. Just for location, you can see in the yellow, this is the hundred and twenty-two acre property that we are looking to rezone to the planned development district. It is located right off of thirty-five and right next to Bruceville Eddie ISD. You can see the front of the property carved out where the school is. As a quick recap, we purchased the property in two thousand and twenty-three and initially it, the zoning for the property as it stands today is SF one, which requires a minimum lot size of nine thousand square feet. We had initially in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four asked for a rezoning of SF two, which was for a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. That was not approved. So starting in September of two thousand and twenty-four, I stepped in, started working with staff and council. Your phone started blowing up, your emails. I'm sure you really enjoyed it, but we had a lot of great conversations. We knew that SF two was not going to be the direction moving forward. So through those conversations with staff and council, we set up some workshops with the EDC in early February. We were able to get some feedback, come back in late February with a proposal of a planned development district. Spend the entire next month behind the scenes with my team and engineering on putting forward a proposal to staff and council. They held a special meeting in April where we were able to get feedback from citizens and council on that proposal that we put forward. We were able to make some changes and then submit an application in May for the PDD that is being presented this evening. So again, I mentioned earlier that the property currently is zoned as SF one and we are proposing to do a planned development district. Early on during our workshopping phases, it was asked that, you know, we look at the property and plan the property under the SF one zoning to kind of look at what those differences are. You can see in the yellow there, the SF one zoning has three hundred and seventy-seven lots. They're all nine thousand square foot lots. They're eighty by one twelve point five, so a hundred and twelve foot deep, eighty foot wide. And there is three point seven nine miles of road within the internal subdivision there. And looking over at the planned development district, there's four hundred and two lots and they range in size from ten thousand square feet all the way down to six thousand square feet. With, it says a minimum depth. It's actually an average depth of a hundred and thirty-three. There is, I think, two lots that are about a hundred and twelve point five and a couple that are a hundred and twenty, but the average depth of those lots are a hundred and thirty-three feet. There is two point five eight miles of road within the internal subdivision there. So comparing those two, there's a twenty-five lot difference between the SF one and the planned development district. There's twenty-five more lots that we're proposing in the planned development district. However, there's one point two miles more of road. And I say that because obviously if we were to develop that today, there would be no maintenance needed. It would be brand new. And with one point two miles more of road, you have water and wastewater lines that run in that road. So it's a lot of extra utilities in road. And fast forward to forty, fifty years from now to the future Bruceville Eddie citizens, that's real money that they have to spend on maintaining those utilities and that road. And there's less tax dollars coming in in that subdivision and, and more tax dollars that would need to be spent for maintenance. Again, we're talking fifty years from now, but we're thinking about what that maintenance would be. Also pointing out that in the SF one district right now for Bruceville Eddie, for an eighty-foot lot, your side yard setbacks are ten percent. So that means it's eight feet on each side from the side of the house to the property line. In the PDD, and we'll get to it in a couple of slides, we are proposing to increase that to a ten-foot side yard setback. So there would be more space between the homes on some of the sizes of lots and we'll go through that in a couple of slides. And then also in the PDD, we have agreed to do a traffic impact analysis to study all of the roads, the traffic patterns, and then with the results of that, make the improvements that are needed. However, under the SF one, that is not a requirement for us to do that study. So I just, I'm sharing this because the, all the same lot size, the grid layout was definitely something that subdivisions were doing ten-plus years ago. And this is an older subdivision in Temple, Texas, not one that we did, but you can see that it's older because there's mature trees here. All of these lots that you see are eighty-foot wide. They're a little bit shallower. You can see the homes are wider. They have shallower back yards. They're all nine thousand square foot lots. These are actually ten-foot side yard setbacks. So for example, going back to that SF one grid plan that was shown before in Bruceville Eddie, if that were to be developed and an aerial were to be shown of that, once developed, those houses would be closer together than what's shown in this image. Not by much, but you know, the difference of eight feet on each side is sixteen from house to house versus right here, it's ten on each side. So it's twenty from house to house. So we really like to, and we've done this in many cities, go the planned development district route. The reason for that is it offers a lot of variety. This is an example of one that we actually did do here in central Texas. It has a mixture of lots ranging from forty-five foot, fifty foot, sixty foot, seventy foot. So it, it really does give a huge variety of options to home buyers. You can see off to the right and off to the left in the larger picture, there's cluster housing. There's your typical subdivision housing and they have the typical spacing between housing. However, in this situation, you're not seeing the grid-type roads. We are seeing a meandering road. And the reason for that in this situation was because we saved an existing pond in that center park area and used that for our trail and open space. This subdivision is like two thousand plus lots. So there's multiple of these open pocket spaces, but this is just an area that I wanted to show. And kind of the reason that we like to do these planned development districts, because it allows us to offer that variety and move away from the, that grid system. So the planned development district that we are proposing in the packet this evening will have a range of lot sizes. So it's kind of made up in two different, two different forms. You can look at it from square footage of lots. So we're offering ten thousand square foot lots, nine thousand, eight thousand, seven thousand, and six thousand. But it's made up of four different lot sizes, so fifty foot, sixty foot, seventy foot, and eighty foot. You'll see the lot mix break down over to the right. And obviously, you know, we've talked in the past that the cost of development comes by the cost of front foot because you're putting road, water, and wastewater in front of the lot. So when you price a lot and sell it to a home builder and a home builder sells it to a buyer, it's priced primarily by the front foot. Obviously, the home builder might mark up a larger lot with a larger backyard because there's some irrigation and grass that goes with it, but the heavy cost is in the development of the lot. So we wanted to try to offer a lot of variety here. Additionally, we've agreed to do a traffic impact analysis that would be submitted with the preliminary plat. We've agreed to add sidewalks and streetlights. That's not part of the subdivision ordinance currently, but that's something that we want to add internally into the subdivision. And then provide open space, parkland dedication with trails, a playscape, preserve the existing pond that a lot of people through workshops and presentations have talked about fishing at as a kid and remember the, the big old tree in front of it. And we want to preserve that and kind of keep that as a public space for the city. Again, I think a lot of people look at subdivisions and they instantly think first-time home buyers. That's not the case anymore. And whenever you have a PDD and you have multiple lot sizes, what you see is you have this variety. So now you have a range of home prices, lot sizes, home sizes. So you may find a young professional buying their first twelve hundred square foot, single-story home, three bedrooms, two bathrooms. You may find your growing family having their third kid, buying their second or third home and by, going towards one of the larger lots. And again, you have your empty nesters that are trying to downsize and they're looking for less yard maintenance, but they still want that single-story home with the extra bedrooms for the grandchildren to come and stay over and they want to live down the street from their kids. So we're really seeing a mix of these multi-generational type communities come in because there is a range of options for housing, lot sizes, prices. And we find that these types of communities draw that, that type of crowd. This is kind of just a picture showing some of the standards that we see in our planned development communities and really all of our communities. But at the top, you, you see some of the houses that, that we find in our communities. One of the popular ones is, is kind of the three-car garage. People love that option and, and we see it a lot on our sixty-foot, seventy-foot, eighty-foot lots because it gives you that garage for your storage and then a garage for your cars. Also on the bottom, one of those areas is a playscape area that we have in one of our pocket parks in a community. And then just showing again the aerial for the planned development that we did. Again, I, I've heard throughout a lot of these meetings concern, you know, Bruceville Eddie is a small city and bringing in four hundred and two homes is, is a big undertaking. And, and that doesn't, that doesn't, you know, go by me and I, I understand that. So I did want to talk through the schedule a little bit and, and there's two parts to the schedule. There's the development part where I come in and build roads, water, and wastewater in lots and then sell them. And then there's the part where the home builder comes in and builds homes and sells them. So looking at the first part of the schedule, and we'll do this in two phases. We have, I have in June of two thousand and twenty-five, the PDD being approved. So TBD on that. But anyways, if that is, the schedule would, would be as follows. In October of two thousand and twenty-five, we would submit the preliminary plat. And the reason for that big gap would be we've agreed to do a traffic impact analysis. We can't do that until school starts because you don't really get an accurate count when there's no school buses or school traffic on the roads. So we would have to really wait until September to even be able to kick that off. So there'd be a delay in us being able to submit that preliminary plat. We would then go into construction documents, hope to submit those by January for city staff and engineering review and hopefully start construction by April of two thousand and twenty-six. We'd anticipate the phase one construction to be about a year long. So that means in April of two thousand and twenty-seven, the first home. So that means in April of 2027, the first home builder is going in for a permit to build their first home. So we're now in April of 2027 before the first house starts to go up. It takes our home builders about six months to build a home. So jumping over to the right side, I have that first home being closed and moved into in September of 2027. We have to make some market assumptions because that's all we can do. So we were looking at our Temple market and our Waco market and trying to make some assumptions. So we assumed here about eighty home closings a year. So given that, in four hundred and two lots, we assume that the first person would move into the community in September of 2027 and the last home would close in August of 2032. So it's really five years of bringing people into the community and, and that growth to onboard it where it's not happening overnight. It gives a lot of time for infrastructure improvements that will need to happen throughout, you know, that time period by us, you know, on the backend as we're developing phase two. So I just wanted to walk through that schedule so everybody is aware that it's not going to happen overnight and we understand that there's, you know, growth issues and we need to be prepared for them and we have that time built in. Also, when we did our special city council meeting back in April, we had put forward a draft PDD agreement to staff and council. And that draft agreement was in your packets and based on conversation from the citizens and from the council, we had made a handful of changes and I wanted to outline some of the changes. Again, you've seen the concept plan. There's four hundred and two lots in it. One of the changes that we put in there was guaranteeing the number of eighty, seventy, and sixty foot lots. And I say that because, just because our concept plan has four hundred and two lots, when we get into the engineering part of things and you need a drainage adjustment or another access point for a road, you may lose a lot. We may end up at three hundred and ninety-five lots. We're not going to end up with more. We're going to end up likely with less. So if we lose any lots, we cannot lose or go down in any of our larger lots. It would have to be a decrease from our fifty foot lots. So we wrote that into the PDD, so we're, you know, we guarantee that. Additionally, I talked about the side yard setbacks. In Bruceville Eddie, in your standards, a sixty foot lot has a five foot side yard setback. So we're proposing to increase that to a six foot side yard setback. Your seventy foot lots have a seven foot side yard setback and your eighty foot lots have an eight foot side yard setback. So we're proposing to take both of those lot sizes and make it a ten foot side yard setback. In the, in the meeting in April, we talked about streetlights. So we have agreed to put streetlights in the subdivision with the development. Those streetlights, the way that Encore is probably who will be doing those, with the way they do is they put them on every intersection and in every cul-de-sac and then typically every three hundred feet. It may be three hundred and twenty, but they're, they're spread out throughout the roadway within the subdivision. Additionally, we added language that council had the ability to appoint the park committee. We also added language that city council had the final park plan approval. We agreed to do a traffic impact analysis. And then we were asked to decrease the fifty foot lots. We were asked to decrease it by a lot, but we were able to make the decrease by ten percent. So we got a decrease in there of the fifty foot lots. And, and kind of moving over to, you know, from, from the PDD terms to some of the benefits that we feel would, this development would bring. I've shared this slide before and, you know, we, we understand that Bruceville Eddie is a, is a rural city and wants to keep that feel. And you're looking at this property being a hundred and twenty-two acres and looking at the total size of the city, this property makes up four percent of the city limits, of the total city land. And it would bring in with the assumption of an average price of three hundred thousand dollars in four hundred and two homes, it would bring in five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in city tax revenue each year. Right now in 2024, 2025, your city's proposed budget for property tax is five hundred and five thousand dollars. And that is because there's a lot of land that's under ag exemption and that, you know, so that number comes down. So this subdivision wouldn't really take away, you know, that, that rural feel. And, and the density in development would be next to the school where kids can walk to school and wouldn't need to be bused to school. And it would more than double your city's property tax revenue. And that money can be used throughout the city to improve roads or whatever city projects you all have that you've been wanting to do and, and provide that steady revenue year after year. And this is also assuming home values don't increase, tax rates don't increase. So this is a very conservative approach of, of coming up with this number. Some of the other community benefits are the park that would come along with the community to everybody in Bruceville Eddie. Also the walkable community with streetlights and sidewalks, it being a safe community, the influx of business to the local business community. So we talked about property taxes, but you, you add these homes to the city and all of a sudden, you know, the existing businesses have more business coming in. So that's raising the, the sales tax revenue for the city. And it's also driving in interest for new business coming into Bruceville Eddie. They're seeing that the population is increasing, that there's a lot more people there and businesses are driving into the city. Talking about school tax, it would bring in over a million dollars a year in school tax and, you know, also be a great place with the, the flexibility of home prices and sizes that we offer for teachers to find a home and hopefully live next to the school. It would also provide for additional funds for emergency services. We talked about the city tax and, and what it could do for roads throughout the city. And then for the sewer, with the tap fees alone for the four hundred and two houses, it would bring in one point two million dollars in revenue. And that is a one-time revenue stream. I understand that, but that's a real number and it's a big number. And then based on just the sewer base fee, not the usage cost that the citizens will pay, it would generate under your current base fee, three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year in revenue for sewer. So we feel that those community benefits would greatly benefit the city of Bruceville Eddie. And I'm going to kind of just land and stop here on our planned development district, concept plan. And thank you all. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer it.
Adrian, I'll let you know real quick, we do have a couple of slides up here for your side-by-side comparison between current zoning ordinances and PDD proposed, if you need to use those.
Yes, we can use those. So perfect. I, I did put this together and this is in the packet. We, we added some of the side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks. So the things that I added in red are what we have agreed to do that are above and beyond what the city's current ordinance is. So as you can see, you know, in, in the current section, that's what the current ordinance of the city is. And then on the PDD, it's what we had agreed to. So a lot of it has, is, is staying the same. We're agreeing to do the same. We're not asking for anything less than. We are agreeing to increase some of the side yard setbacks. And then for landscaping, we, there aren't really a criteria for single-family residential landscaping, but we are not letting that happen and requiring that trees and shrubs and, and landscaping does happen in the front of these yards. But again, you know, under the straight zoning of FF one, SF one, if a builder comes in and they don't want to do that or spend that money, they don't have to. I don't know why they wouldn't, but they don't have to and we can't force them to. So there's some of these differences.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Any citizen? This is, this is up, open to public hearings. This is citizens.
I have another question just because I'm thinking, I'm thinking of four hundred cars going down Old Moody Road in the mornings or on Eagle, Eagle Drive, which I'm just wondering what the city would do to make Old Moody Road and Eagle Drive be able to handle that much traffic.
We, we can't talk about that right now during this.
Oh, my question would go to her.
Okay.
No, I don't have a question.
You did a wonderful job explaining everything.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Where, where's the water runoff going to go from all these houses? Are you going to be able to contain a pond or what are we going to do?
Can I answer that?
So we will have to do a full drainage study, which will be submitted with the preliminary plat. We have done a high level drainage study right now. So we'll have to prove no like adverse effect, that we're not at putting anything more. It's really hard to see on here, so I'm going to walk up here.
Go for it. Go ahead.
We, if you can see, we've done a high level drainage study. We do have drainage channels. We're proposing, this is a high point, so drainage runs this way. We have a channel that will drain and run back. So we would be using this for detention. All storm inlets would be in the streets, so it would be captured in storm sewer and it would be detained on site. So all of these open areas here are channels to detain and, and bring storm on site. So we are planning for that. We will have to submit that to the city for their review.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions that they want to discuss or say, comments? Yes, sir.
As far as the traffic analysis, who is that for and how's it going to be used? And I have a concern doing it in September when all the roads are tore up and everybody's detouring all the way around and coming back the other way. I mean, the traffic on Eagle Drive would be subpar as far as normal traffic when the roads are completed once the sewer's system's in. So I'm a little concerned about the traffic flow. I'm really concerned. I'm concerned. I'm not going to live in there, but I'm concerned of the width of the roads going through the subdivision. I think we've got a thirty foot road. For all roads, I'm guessing will be thirty foot. I don't know if that traffic analysis is going to open those roads wider to get cars up and down in and out of the subdivision, but I can attest, a thirty foot road with no ordinances with people parking on the road, you may lucky to get a garbage truck and a fire truck through there when everybody's at home in the evenings. And dumpsters on the side of the road trying to get trash picked up and so forth. Those are some of my concerns, but for sure the traffic, the safety for our kids at the school with the traffic flow. But I'm kind of curious how we use that traffic analysis and what, what do we do with it? Is that for the city to say we're going to have to widen Eagle Drive and Old Moody Road? Or is it traffic flow to get in and out of subdivision?
We, we can't answer that. Thank you.
So when we do the traffic impact analysis, we first would have a meeting with the city and the city's engineer. They would provide that scope. We don't make that scope up. So the city and the city's engineer is going to tell us when we have to do the traffic study, what, what areas we have to study. There is limits to that. They can't tell us, you know, two miles from the site. There's, there's limits to where we study, but we study the areas. And when that analysis comes in, it will take into consideration the cars on the roads and the classification that that road needs to be, whether that's internal to the subdivision or external to the subdivision. Now, if it's external to the subdivision and it, it says that the classification of, of a road is to be something more than it is, we can only make improvements to what the city owns and controls. So if there's land not owned, we would then make up, you know, our share of improvements to what area is owned. And then, you know, once the development comes across the street, then they, they could expand that further. But in any way, there would be improvements to what's existing today.
And I will say, Mayor, following up on this one, our subdivision ordinance does specifically state that, you know, the roads that are connecting to this subdivision do have to be improved to a certain value, which the TIA will help determine.
All right. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, all right. Okay, all right. It is now six fifty-three and this public hearing is now closed. And it is now six fifty-four and our regular council session is back in order. Closing the public hearing, zoning change from the single-family dwelling District One to Planning Development District nine oh one Eagle Drive, Eddie, Texas, seven six five two four. And number seven, zoning changes from the single-family dwelling District One to Planned Development District nine oh one Eagle Drive, Eddie, Texas, seven six five two four. At the request of an agent of the property owner, council discussed considering probably take action on ordinance oh six dash two six dash two oh two five dash one, changing the zoning classification of property located at nine oh one Eagle Drive, Texas, seven six five two four, containing a total of a hundred and twenty-two point four six acres and further described as being located within the city limits of Bruceville Eddie and in between Eagle Drive and Old Moody Road from its current destin- destination of single-family dwelling District One to Planned Development District and amending the official zoning map of the city of Bruceville Eddie, McLennan County, Texas, to rightly reflect said changes. Yeah, I've got to do it right here.
I missed that. Can you read it again?
All right. So now we can, we can talk and it's up, we have questions. And anybody wants a question to ask us? Well, we can talk. We can talk now. This is, this is a regular meeting, so.
So I don't know if I missed, my name is Diana Richardson. I don't know if I missed a city council meeting, but the last thing I remember was the question of whether the city can afford to take care of the park. And I love what she showed, how the walking trails, that's beautiful. And so that was the last thing I remember of whether we just want to have all different sized lots with homes or have the park. And so I don't know if I missed something and there was a decision made on that or, or whatever. That's all.
So no decision on a park has been made. It is a part of the planned development district, which council was considering tonight that park is in there. Now, what the park specifically looks like will be determined at a later date. In the PDD, it mentions that council and the EDC will work together to form a committee as to, as to the, the plans for that park. It would potentially come back to city council for final approval, up to a certain amount of money being spent on that. And of course, yes, we would, we would certainly have to consider the, the long-term maintenance costs as a part of that.
I mean, I think the city could do it with, because more money is going to be coming into the city. But, and I, but there might need to be more police because parks can end up as drug use, you know how they go. But the concept is just, is awesome. I love it. But it, and I think the city could do it if, if the city had a will to do it. That's all.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're working on trying to find more officers as, as we speak, but not for this project, but just to have more. So yes, ma'am, we understand the concern there. Okay, anybody else? If you have, yes, ma'am.
My name is Cindy Edmiston. I live on West Third Street. Currently, the develop, or the company here, we have SF one right now. So they could move forward. with doing the development with single-family housing right now. With looking at roads, Eagle Drive, Moody Drive, fixing that up to, to the agreed whatever. So, they could go forward right now with doing this development of three hundred and eighty-nine homes. So, what I think is being considered is, do we do the planned development with the mix in sizes to accommodate new family starters, establish, people downsizing, people just wanna get away from everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, small town. So, we're gonna have this one way or the other, it's just what direction we wanna go as a community. We can't not have the thirty-foot road, maybe have to make it wider, regardless, whether we do it, single-family or planned development. So, I don't know how much is really, we just have to decide the difference of, what do we want it to look like? And have a big lots with bigger homes, and bigger lots that a lot of people don't wanna take care of. I know, as we've gotten older, we want less and less yard. Okay? So, we mow less of what we've got. So, I think it's a matter of looking at what we feel like we would draw into the three hundred and eighty-nine home subdivision, or four hundred and two, or however many it is. I just wanted to make that point of, they can go forward now with this three hundred and eighty-nine.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's just a matter of how we want it to look, and what we want it to offer.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and also, we, you know, with going the other way, you know, they could go ahead and develop that now, but going the other way, I'm looking at, okay, we get a park, we get, we get all these special drainage places, we get, you know, where the water runoff, we get all this other stuff, you know? So, that's just why I'm like you, that's what I'm looking at.
But I think you're also limiting yourself to that size home.
That's it.
And people aren't going
Like a chain home.
For those big homes. Some of them will, want the eighty-foot lots. But there's gonna be a lot of them, for affordability purposes, are gonna go for the smaller yards and smaller lots. So, I just wanted to clarify, going forward, they could go.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Councilman Crater?
Well, I can tell you firsthand, uh, WBW jumped through a whole lot of hoops. They went above and beyond to, to make this happen. They, they could've just made it happen with what we got right now. They give up a whole lot, and they've taken some. So, uh, I think it's been a fair exchange, uh, to get what you want. We, we bartered pretty hard, y'all bartered pretty hard. But y'all, y'all made, uh, y'all made big strides to make this happen for us. I like what y'all have done there. I like the idea of having a park, that we don't have to go to Lorraine or Troy to take our kids to. That was something big on my, my agenda for it. But I, I think y'all really jumped through hoops, and we made y'all jump high. And y'all really come through, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of the way it turned out.
I think what is a good mix, really, for our attorney, i- if you have that ordinance, do you have that ord-? Okay, o- okay. Specifically, and there's some copies of this back there on the table, if anybody wants it. Specifically, that section five, could you just explain that section? Where it talks about, I'll just read that, it's real short.
If you'd come up to the mic, please.
It says that all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, and all other provisions of the ordinances of the city of Bruce Felletti not in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. So, if you could explain that, please.
So, section five is, is really standard boilerplate language that goes in almost every single ordinance that any city puts in place. It's, it's some legalese, but basically what it's doing is basically saying that this ordinance basically kinda controls this situation. It's not repealing your ordinances, if that's what you're worried about, like SF one is still SF one. This doesn't repeal it. This is specific to this property that this is going into effect for, if you choose to approve this ordinance. It would be for this one hundred and twenty-two acres. It's not repealing SF one. If some other property is zoned that way, and that's how they wanna proceed, those are the rules for that particular property. It is literally just saying, parts of your ordinances that conflict with this ordinance, for this one hundred and twenty-two acres, this, this rules, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So, you're not repealing anything else unless you
But it's, okay, okay, so if something is not covered in this, in this ordinance, or the, which is also Exhibit B, if it's not covered in here, then we would revert back to our current ordinance?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct, yes.
So, because somebody was saying, well, what about fire hydrants, for example? You know? And it's not, it's not covered in this Exhibit B or the ordinance, but it's, was still in our ordinance?
Right.
Okay.
So, that, if that, right.
Okay. Not, not, okay, so that clarifies that. Now, section seven.
That is what we call a savings clause.
Okay.
It's another boilerplate section that goes in pretty much all ordinances, all cities. What it's doing is preserving, like, um, any kind of, it would be rare in this particular instance, but we still do them anyway. It's, uh, keeping you from, like, if there was some type of pending litigation, like a citation, a violation of your, of your code, or, or, uh, traffic violations sometimes come up, it allows us to proceed. This wouldn't change like an existing lawsuit. Um, I'm gonna give an example that my coworker used, when she was in Dallas. A, they changed some ordinances, they did not put in the savings clause, and they had a, it had several, uh, traffic violations that fell under that, that prior ordinance, and because they didn't put the savings clause in, a defense attorney argued, then all these have to be dropped. So, this is what this protects against. So, in this particular instance, you probably wouldn't have anything, it's a big vacant tract of land.
Right.
But let's say it didn't, let's say it had some structures on it.
Okay.
And code enforcement had issued a citation, under the SF one, for whatever reason, I don't know. It wouldn't allow that to drop. So, this is just going forward, and preserves any old lawsuits that would have possibly been brought under previous, uh, versions of this, if that makes sense.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of a rare thing in this, but it's just one of those things lawyers like to have it in there.
Right, okay, okay. Well, that, that satisfies it, and that, you know, I appreciate you answering that, and thank you. The only other thing I have is, uh, is on that Exhibit B.
Is it for me, or for?
Well,
WBW?
Uh, not, I just, not necessarily for you, no. It, it would be for Adriana. On Exhibit B, that's number twenty, where it talks about the traffic impact analysis, it doesn't, I know you stated earlier that it would be done, uh, when school's in session, but it's not in there. I, I'd feel more comfortable if it was in writing.
I, I'm fine if that is a, if, if this is approved tonight, and that is a condition of approval, I'm fine with that. But also, the city has to do the scoping of that traffic impact analysis, we can't just go forward with it. So, if that's part of their scope, that's what we would have to do.
Okay.
But for, for peace of mind,
Right.
if, if this were to be approved this evening, and that were a condition of approval, I'm fine with that.
Okay, okay.
We're, we're aware of that. No, no city in the world has ever let us do a traffic impact study when school's not in session, so we're aware of that.
Right, okay. One other thing that, was that, uh, when Mr. Murray brought it up, about, uh, we wouldn't wanna do it in September because the way the roads are, people going different routes. I don't know other, what other way can they get to the school, other than Eagle Drive? Yeah, but they still have to come down Eagle Drive, to get to the school. Right, right, but I mean, they, they have to come down Eagle Drive to drop their kids off at the, at the school. It's still, yeah, it'd be a short stretch, yeah, yeah. No, I, yeah, I understand that. Okay.
Yes, sir, you have a question?
What has happened with Miracle Drive? School still own it, or have we taken it, the city taken it under eminent domain?
We're still working, we're still working with the school on that, sir.
See, that's another alternative to get into the school.
That's gonna have to be on another time, on another council meeting. That would've been something that we should've asked, when I, when we had, when I had it open for citizens' presentations, you know? If you had something, that was something that you could ask about, that we could put on a, a, a later, uh, agenda. But we can't discuss it tonight. Thank you, sir, sorry. Okay, all right, uh, do we have anybody else, or do we wanna take a motion?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
On this development that we're voting on, I guess, tonight, is that for just the developer, or is that for the acreage? Say that we pass this, and their studies down the road say they still have their hands and walk off, we're gonna sell it. Does that stay with the land, or does that go with them?
So, yeah, the, the zoning ordinance on this one would completely be changed to this concept plan, so
For the next home.
In theory, and help me out, Christina, yeah, if, if they were to sell this, they would have to sell it with the condition that this is the zoning now, and the agreements are transferable.
Right, but if, essentially, if, if for one reason or another they decide to do it, if they're gonna do it, that developer would have to come back and ask for changes.
And we, we've seen that in some, some cities surrounding here, where a new developer will come in and ask for some changes to that.
Somebody offers them a better price, they will just take the money, not the loan.
Yeah, they have, but they, the, the new buyers have to, uh, have changes.
Good question.
Okay, all right, any, uh, it's a good question, yes. Anybody wanna make a motion? Oh, okay, another question.
Okay, uh, like I said, every, everything looks good, I have, what about our, uh, you know, they're talking about basically two years down the road before the first home is gonna be sold, I'll say. Now, what about our sewer? Our sewer, a- and they're only gonna have Phase One, and approximately how many homes will be in Phase One?
So, Phase One is gonna be a little bit smaller than we thought, now that we're kind of doing some engineering work for the SF One. We've been able to apply this PDD on top of it. Phase One right now is probably gonna be a hun- we have it at like a hundred and forty-eight to a hundred and fifty-three lots. I know that sounds oddly specific, because it kinda is. And so, it will be a, a smaller phase. That said, uh, you know, as far as the sewer goes, we did look into that. Your TCEQ permit, uh, was issued in December of twenty twenty-three, and it needs to be renewed every five years. Um, in order to renew your permit, you have to start a year in advance, so you would be starting that renewal process in December of twenty twenty-seven. So, the good news for that is, you know, with our development, our engineering, we would be very aware of what that increased permit capacity would need to be, and that timing lines up perfectly, because we would be getting those first homes on the ground that there would be capacity for, but at the same time, permitting and designing for that expansion, because it does need to be renewed every five years, your discharge permit. So, we have looked into that, and, and really with the schedule, and, and the date that your original permit was issued, and your renewal need to be issued, it just kind of lines up, which I guess is one good, one, one, you know, for us, so.
Okay, okay. And that make, makes a question I guess I'll have for Kent, is, okay, if, if this goes through, and we're gonna need to put in for more sewer space, I'll, I'll call it, uh, the ponds, then who's gonna pay for that?
Well, I think it, it would be a two-part, um, payment, right? So, there's no question that this development, as built out, will trigger more than our seventy-five percent rule. So, we would have to be designing and implementing an expansion. How big do we wanna go? How big can we go? There's a lot of variables that we don't know yet, we're still putting this in the ground, right? The developer would be responsible for everything that they're required to put in to service their homes. Does the city have money, and do we want to expand that further, to capture more growth? Or do we just wanna account for what, uh, Eagle Prairie is doing to offset that, to get us back up to where we were before that development began, if that makes sense? Was that all muddy? Is that pretty? Okay.
About like the sewer, it's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Monique Sauer, Moser. Um, I, I was actually piggybacking on the sewage question. You were talking about the drainage, and how it goes towards the park? And I was wondering if the park is sewage?
You mean, you're calling it a park, but
does the drainage go into the park area, so that it's, it has a odor?
They were talking about runoff.
No, we're, they're talking about runoff, rain runoff, and stuff like that. Yes, ma'am, not sure. That's why we're, that's why we're getting the sewer in, so we can get rid of the step tank that do run into the streets. All right, uh, no more questions, or somebody wanna make a motion? Okay?
I'll move, well, I guess I'm gonna do the backup, please, so I get it right.
Microphone.
And your microphone.
Okay, magic fingers. Okay, so, yeah, okay, I'm gonna make it simple. I, I move that we approve ordinance number, oh, six dash twenty-six dash twenty twenty-five dash one, creating the, uh, PDD for the hundred and twenty-two acres off of Eagle. I'll say.
You second it, Mr. Crater? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. I bet you're relieved now, finally. Finally. Thank you, very much. Okay, uh, number eight, changing, changes to the official slogan motto. Council to discuss, uh, consider and possibly take action to amend the existing city's logo, rising into the future. Uh, and we discussed this during workshop, if y'all want to discuss it some more, or if y'all want to take, uh, make a motion on it.
Can I point out this?
I'll make a motion that we keep the, uh, the current motto?
The motto.
Motto? Rising into the future.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Richardson seconded it, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, okay?
Before we move on, Mayor, I would just like to kinda point out, Mr. Edmiston brought up the Miracle Lane thing, that is on the agenda. If you look at the agenda packet, that is part of our executive session. So, I just wanted to point that out.
That's true, we couldn't say anything about it.
I didn't know if it had to be asked during open session, or during regular meetings, so I didn't know. No, I got you.
Thank you, we appreciate you though. We're gonna get you up here in one of these seats, and you can just put this out. All right, uh, number nine, vehicle tire purchase. Council to discuss, consider, and possibly take action on the establishment of procedures for the tracking of maintenance, and the purchasing of a new tires, new tires for the city vehicles. Uh, this was also discussed in our, uh, uh, workshop, so if anybody else wanna make any more talk about it? If you have any more questions about it, if anybody has some questions, any more comments? Okay, Mr. Wiggins?
Okay, I, I'd just like to make a, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, that we, going forward, that we have them, uh, have maintenance, I'm gonna call it maintenance records, so in other words, any oil changes, anything we have done to any vehicle, any tires, or whatever we have done, and that they keep a record of that, and that record be on the computer, maybe a, a spreadsheet, and that way, you know, if it's on there, then if some council member, somebody asks for it, all they gotta do is send it to them, out there, and they got it. Or if we wanna print it out for somebody that buys a vehicle from us, uh, then we have those records that we could forward to them, or whatever, but anyway. Anyway, that's, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Richardson seconded, all in favor? Three, three opposed?
Would you like to take a five-minute break, because it's kind of close to people here, a lot of people were here for the comment section on the PDD?
Okay, so we want to take a five-minute break?
If y'all want to.
Yes.
Okay. It is seven eighteen, and, uh, we're gonna take a five-minute, uh, pause for the calls. Thank you very much.
It is now seven thirty. And our council session is back in session. Our session is back in session. And we are going to the number ten, which is the equipment purchase lawnmower. Council to discuss, consider and probably take action to approve the city administrator to purchase a new riding lawnmower for public works in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars using monies in the FY twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five budget, primarily budget line item under five oh dash oh oh dash six six oh eight of the water fund.
Mayor, council, I've got some bullet points up here that y'all can certainly use. I can answer any questions, but I think Gene would probably be best to speak on this one because him and his crew are going to be the ones utilizing it.
Okay, Gene?
Got a couple pictures of some of the options we're going to be considering.
So what we want to do, that Hustler is a twenty twelve, it's got so many hours on it. It's a good mower for inside the wells, plants and stuff, but we have so much outside these wells and behind City Hall and the fire hall. That big mower that we got takes us all day. So if we get another sixty one inch mower, then it's going to cut down the mowing time and maybe cut down the shredding where we can do some of the mowing on some of the roads like Old Moody Road and stuff. So, and we're looking at, can you go to the next one? We're looking at either the Gravely or the Skag on the left, and I'm leaning more towards that Skag because it says commercial grade mower on the front of it. We've got a Gravely now, haven't had any mechanical issues out of it except for a belt slipping and coming off. And I talked to the owner. There is a replacement part that they're going to put on when it comes in at no cost. So at least they're taking care of that. But either mower to me seems a good mower.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wiggins.
I'll just make a motion. I know they need it. So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the purchase of a mower in amount not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Mr., there was time. I'll take Mr. Prater on this one. And all in favor? Unanimous, all right? Okay, now we're going to number eleven, staff report. Council to discuss and consider staff reports from the city administrator, chief of police, city attorney, consultant engineer and department head. Everybody has everything that we talk about. All of the reports are in your pamphlet. If y'all have any question for anybody in that, head of the department, y'all can ask it. If not, we'll just go on. Mr. Richardson, you have a question?
I just have one quick question for Chief Dorsey. I'm looking at the May twenty twenty five SRO. What was that the adult arrest for on the school campus? Just what was the charge on that?
It was a fight. It was assault.
Okay.
That happened in the parking lot. They're in school hours and there were three people involved, but one of them was seventeen.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you.
I just made sure it wasn't like a forty year old coming and messing with kids.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions for any of the department heads? If not, we'll move right along. Number twelve, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be consideredated by the city council and will be interacted on by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests. A, approval of minutes. B, financial May of twenty twenty five. Is that it? Oh, yeah, that's it. Okay, that's two. Does anybody have any questions? Want anything pulled? Do we have a motion? Mr. Wiggins?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, Mr. Richardson seconded it. Seconded it. I haven't been talking long. Okay, executive session. The city council shall meet in executive session, discuss the following.
Do we need to vote on this?
Oh, all in favor? Thank you. No, sir, we didn't, but thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, now, number thirteen, executive session. A, the city council shall meet in executive session to discuss the following. Miracle Lane McLennan CAD property number one oh five two six four, the Texas government code section five five one point oh seven one. Consultation with city attorney and session one point oh five Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct confer with the city attorney to receive legal advice regarding Miracle Lane. And Miracle Lane McLennan County CAD property number one oh five two six four, Texas government code section five five one one point oh seven two. Definitely direction. Okay, deliberation. There we go. I'll get it out in a minute. About real property, a governmental body may conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if deliberation in a open meeting would have a determinal effect of the possession of this governmental body in negotiation with a third party and. Industry this year. So there's one more. And then ten fifteen Park Lake Drive, McLennan County CAD property number one oh five six nine eight and patrol officer, law enforcement academy sponsorship. Okay, and it is. In the code, it's the Texas government code section five five one point oh seven four. And the city secretary temporary over hire. It is now seven thirty eight and we are closing the executive session, the meeting to go into executive session.
Okay, it is now eight forty-six and we are reconvening into our open session. We, I mean coming back, sorry. Our executives, we're back in our executive session. Our regular council meeting is over. Okay, uh, B. Reconvene into open section. Okay, do I need to read all these things again?
No ma'am.
Okay, alright, uh, so... Do we have any actions on any item? Oh, sorry about that.
Maybe.
I have... It usually, there it goes. Okay, uh, do we have any, any, uh, conversations on this or any motions?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on the patrol officer section spot or agenda item. I motion to authorize the Bruce Valley Police Department Chief Dorsey to sponsor, to possibly sponsor a cadet through the academy with the only change to the recommended contract being change the length from four years to three years.
Okay, alright, Mr. Prater second that. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you gentlemen. Okay, any other ones?
I would also like to make a second, make another motion on the city secretary temporary over hire section of the agenda. I motion to authorize the city administrator to immediately post the position of city secretary to fill a forthcoming opening due to retirement and approval of the increase in salary and temporary over hire for up to two, up to four months.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Wiggins second that. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you guys. Alright, uh, now we're going to number fourteen. Mr. Prager, number fourteen.
I'll make a motion and we adjourn.
(laugh) I had to look and make sure.
I'll second.
Alright, (laugh) we have a second. All in favor? Unanimous? It is eight forty-eight and our regular council meeting is over. Thank you late, thank you gentlemen and thank you ladies for staying. Thank you chief.
One day we need to vote tonight.